Do you want to start?
Yeah.
Okay. We acknowledge, appreciate the land in which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. Called order, I just want to do a big shout out to Sophie Hayes, who is our engineer down in Public Works. She helped organize trucks and kids last Saturday, and great event, and well done. So, thanks to Sophie and the Boys and Girls Club, BG, BGC, that worked on it with, with Sophie. It was a very big success. I want to thank councilors for coming out today. It's just two items, and I have number two declarations of conflict of interest. See enough? Rule of agenda for A, B, one economic tourism and cultural development resolution, parking ticket forgiveness program. B, one planning and heritage resolution, application for the rehabilitation of, in addition to eighty-five Houston Street, former Houston Street Irving Station. Moved by councillor Beck, seconded by councillor Matarde. All in favor? Okay. Councillor Dran?
In favor.
Councillor McCabe?
Favor.
Okay. First item, do we want to read the resolution first and have discussion?
Economic, excuse me, Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Resolution Number One, moved by councillor Terry Bernard and seconded by councillor Mitch Twill. Let it be resolved that the city council, in partnership with the downtown Charlestown Inc., DCI, support the implementation of a parking ticket forgiveness program within the boundaries of the Business Improvement Area, BIA, and that the dates for this initiative in 2025 include October 1st through December 31st, 2025. And further, the program applies solely to metered parking.
Have councillor Bernard, councillor Twill, and councillor Beck.
Just going to, just going to give a little bit of background, the worship. The Parking Forgiveness Program is a collaborative initiative between the downtown DCI, downtown Charlestown Inc., and the city of Charlestown. Aim should stimulate economic growth by encouraging residents and visitors to support local business during periods of increased need. So, this was done in 2024, so we're billing on the program's success, your worship, to offer it again from October 1st to December 31st. So, I don't know, Wayne, do you want to give any, any history to that?
Wait, okay.
If I missed anything? You worship through the chair, I would just simply add that this program has been happening for three years, I believe now, so this would be the third year. There's others in the region and beyond that are doing similar programs. It comes at a time in October that has alignment with Small Business Week is coming up later this month, and then it helps the downtown businesses through the months of, of October, November, and December as we move into the, the holiday season. It's not a heavy cost to the corporation in terms of, of the revenue that we leave on the table, however, it does have good impact on the, the business community. As the chair indicated, it solely applies to metered parking only, and all of the other details are within the report in terms of the finer details, but if there's any specific questions, I'll address those.
Councillor Twill?
I, I think it's a good program, as Wayne pointed out. It's been in existence now for three years, met with a lot of good success, a lot of goodwill on behalf of the city, working in collaboration with the Downtown Business Association, begins in October, concludes at the end of December. What I'd like our senior staff to take into consideration is what can we do to expand this program? One of the concerns that you hear from our city residents is, you know, they don't have enough time when they put money in the meters, regardless of what time of the year excluding October from December. So, I wonder if there's a possibility, if we could go back to our partners, the Downtown Business Association, police services, the Economic Development Tourism Committee, to see what can be done to create other incentives, other incentives, so we can encourage more people to come and shop downtown Charlestown. There's a significant investment taking place in our downtown. All you have to do is go down Kent Street, and you see the major development that Homberg's doing, and if you go down Queen Street on your left-hand side, there's going to be a major development by Bevan Brothers. So, you know, I, I think now is, now is the time to, to, to work with our partners, that's what they are, their partners. They're making major, major investments in, in our downtown, and I think it'd be worthwhile to at least explore, to explore and examine those, those possibilities and those options. So, I, I think it's a good program. I would just like the opportunity just to, you know, just to further explore maybe the expansion of the program or other incentives that could attract even more people to come downtown Charlestown. Thank you.
Councillor Bernard, do you want to address that, please?
Thank you, councillor Twill. And yeah, you're on, you're on the committee, so if you want to bring that stuff up at our next committee meeting, put it on the agenda. I'm just wondering, one of the things you said was not enough time. You're talking about the program that we're offering, not enough time in length, or not enough time per parking space when they put their money in the meter?
Councillor Twill?
Yeah, thank you. What I meant by is when people put money in the meters, sometimes they don't have enough time. They could be seeking professional services, meeting with a lawyer, meeting with a doctor, or getting, you know, other professional services or shopping. They put money in the meter, and they don't have enough time, and they're always cognizant of that. You know, they could meet a friend and say, let's go for lunch, or let's go grab a coffee, or whatever the case may be, and they find that they don't have enough time and they, they have to leave. So, that's why I, I talk about, can, can we explore, you know, whether the expansion of this program or other incentives to attract people to come downtown Charlestown? And, you know, if you look at the letter from DCI, you know, I quote, "That the occasional delays can be met with understanding rather than a penalty." So, that unfortunately sometimes is the perception. Yet people say, well, I'm not going to get downtown, I can't get, it's just too hard, you know, not enough time in terms of when they put money in the meter, and they're, and they're always looking at their watch and they're rushed. So, that's, that's what I meant by it.
Yeah. I think for those that don't know, councillor Twill, I think it's probably good to know that we have an app, the Hot Spot App, that you can put in your time. If you're running out of time, it gives you an alert to let you know to put more in, and if you finish early, you can cancel that time and get your money back. So, I think that if, if they don't know about that, that seems to help an awful lot of people that I've been talking to, is they go, just a matter of putting the number in the meter, and away they go. If they're running behind, they just, they just add some more money to the meter.
It's discussions, we can have it. Your standing committee, and also standing committee, councillor McCabe? Councillor Beck?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I, yeah, I certainly support the program. The one thing I'm wondering, if there's any appetite for removing, I know one of the criteria was you can only waive one ticket per week. Would there be an appetite of just removing that? I mean, we're only talking, I think, sixty-four people that access it last year, I think, was it, Wayne? It was, and Wayne mentioned the fact that, you know, it's not a huge, just, just to see whether there's any interest in that, if we want to remove that. I, I don't see why there would be a limit on that. I think we're, the whole idea is to try and encourage people to come down, and we're promoting the program, so I don't know if there is an appetite, and if not, that's good. I just wanted to throw that out there for consumption. Thank you.
That's a good idea. Councillor Bernard?
Yeah, thank you councillor Beck. We will, we will discuss it. I'm not sure why that clause is in there, but we'll discuss it, see what the ramifications may be, but if it's something that we can drop, we'll certainly do that. Thank you.
It's not in the resolution, but it's part of the eligibility.
Yeah.
Criteria. You can move, remove at the committee lab. Okay.
This isn't going back.
Through the chair, you worship, I'm sorry, go ahead, councillor. I was just going to say, the criteria that's in the program is, was requested of the city from DCI directly. Staff didn't come up with this particular criteria. Then the second item, I would say, although your point is valid, we'd have to check with DCI. The program starts today, and all of the, the promotion and marketing material is likely at street level, so we'd need to have a conversation with them on that, at least for this particular timeframe.
Yeah, and that's what I want to say, was this, this came through them, so there may be a reason why they have that clause in. That's why I said, I'd like to find that reason out before we get back to it, and if we can change it, we can make that happen.
Your messenger, Mike?
Perhaps I can use, perhaps I can use this one, your worship. Just for mayor and council's awareness, when that program was adopted, I know DCI and the police services consulted other municipalities and considered this to be the best practice, and so I think that's why DCI had made the recommendation and were supported by the police service also.
Councillor Beck?
So, is it just a matter of DCI approving this, whether they want it or not? Like, it's really, we don't really have any say in that because it's more their request, so are we looking? I, I don't want to stop, I don't want to stop the program from going ahead, but maybe if it might be a discussion that we could have with DCI and see, do you want to do that or not? I'm fine either way.
Yeah.
I, I just put it out there for consumption, just for people to think.
Brad has a hand up, so let's see. Go ahead.
Your worship, the, I guess, I think it's important to recognize, you know, that, you know, we're, you know, supported this program in the past, but the, the concept of meter parking is, is to promote space turnover in the downtown, right? So, can't lose sight of that, that those same businesses will benefit from space turnover and opportunities for people to park. That's, that's at the heart of, of the meter parking concept.
But it's a future discussion you're going to have, right? Councillor?
Yeah, so just to follow up, councillor Beck, I mean, we will, we will reach out to DCI and we'll, we'll see if they prefer to leave that clause in, if there's movement on it, and, but I think we will move ahead on this resolution for now. That's, that's an administrative process that we can make.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Councillor Ramsey has called the question.
Oh, wow, didn't you call the question?
Question's been called, question's been called. Okay. All in favor? Councillor Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Councillor McCabe?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, second item is planning. Do, do you want to read it first, deputy mayor? Or do you want to?
Excuse me, your worship, I have to leave now, I'm sorry, I have another meeting.
Julie, councillor McCabe, we can't hear you.
I said I have to get off now, I have another meeting, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Twill, you have a point to make?
Yeah, I do. Back in September the 3rd, I submitted a notice of motion regarding the Irving Oil property, and that notice of motion was read out at the September meeting. The notice of motion consists of the following. Good evening, Tracy. I would respectfully request a notice of motion regarding the Irving Oil project. I'm requesting that all costs associated with the project thus far, that includes the anticipated capital cost, architectural cost, which includes conceptual designs, detailed designs, number of architectural firms that have been included in the project, personnel that have worked on the project from a layperson's perspective, how much have they have been paid, who is responsible for retaining this particular group. Secondly, what are the anticipated capital costs? What are the anticipated operational costs? How much is CADC being pays as a newly coordinated project consultants? What is the arrangement? Who made the arrangement? How much time has senior management in the Planning and Heritage Department been involved and invested in this project? What are the final terms and conditions of the contract with Irving Oil? What are the timeframes and timelines for the completion of the project? I'm requesting public consultation with city residents. This can be accomplished by having serious, series of public meetings, online consultation, social media platforms, and I want the constituents to be informed and involved every step of the way. All other relevant information regarding this project is important and imperative from a transparency and an open perspective. Residents required to have all this knowledge and information. Thank you, Tracy. So, I did submit that to our recording secretary back on September the 3rd, our chief administrative officer ran a notice of motion, and I think you said yourself, Mr. Mayor, you know, that you supported my notice of motion. I, I thought my inquiry that I made would be dealt with, to be honest with everyone here, and I'm trying to be proactive, trying to be respectful of the process, so we would have this information. There's a lot of questions being asked in the community, and that's why, that's why I filed a notice of motion. I thought the contents of, of the motion would be dealt with first, before, you know, we're going to sign off. So, I wanted to bring that forward to, to the public record again. You know, I, my, my motivation is to be responsible and, and for good governance. Thank you.
Yep. I, I feel council is looking at that same responsibility, but we can read the motion and put it on the floor. Do you want to read the motion there? CAO?
What? You have a resolution?
Read the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, and then we can address it.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Lanny Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie, or sorry, councillor Norman Beck. Let it be resolved that the application for the rehabilitation and new addition to the designated heritage resource located at eighty-five Houston Street, former Irving Station identified as PID number three five five nine one seven and PID number three five five nine two five be approved.
Do you wish to address it first, Chair, or do you want to? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. And so this project has, has been through many departments, and this is, this is a resolution to make sure that it meets the heritage preservation bylaw, and so it's been reviewed by the Heritage Department and the Heritage Board, and they're accepting staff's recommendation in terms of the applications rehabilitation and the new addition to the designated heritage resource located at eighty-five Houston Street. As for councillor Twill's questions, those would be interdepartmental, which would have to be addressed, that notice of motion, through many of the departments, because the Department of Planning and Heritage was not the beginning place where this, this went. This was through, you know, many meetings of, of council of the whole, through finance, et cetera. So, I can't speak to the money part of it. I knew, I know that all of council accepted that notice of motion, so I assume we all want that answer, but today, the decision would be whether or not we, we believe that this project meets the heritage component of the next steps. I don't think this, this supersedes or takes away from the questions that councillor Twill is asking to be brought forward for information for council, but I'll leave that up to council, and if there's any questions in terms of the heritage aspect of this and that process, I'm happy to answer, but any other questions would have to be through our director, Michael Russ, as he's been in charge of this file. Thank you.
Do you wish to add anything, Mr. Russ?
Through the, through your worship and the chair on this issue, appreciate the questions. According to the process in the procedural bylaw, any notice of motion goes through the regular council meeting and then the respective committee meeting before it comes back to another regular meeting of council. So, staff are currently compiling information, pulling all the previous records to fulfill your request, and that would be presented at a future committee meeting and then council. I know that doesn't really answer your question today, but I know that doesn't really answer your question today, but, um, the timing of that request was a little bit, um, you know, awkward, given where we were with this proj, project at, um, at this point in time.
Council Twill?
Um, well, um, again, what motivated me was to, uh, bring that notice of motion forward. And that's before the new amendment was made to the procedural bylaw. So, everything was done, the up and up. Um, you know, there's, there's many, many different questions, even with the, uh, what the proposal is before council here today. From a purist's perspective, uh, the addition to the Irving Oil property, you know, I don't live far from this property, so I see the property every day. Even without the extension, what is there now is not the original character, is not the original facade, it's not the original, uh, structure of that building. There was, there was many changes made to this building. Uh, I can recall when Enterprise, our rental was there. So, um, and again, the usage of the property, and that's why in my notice of motion, we've had people ask questions, they've asked me questions. Try to my best to, uh, to make sure that they're involved in the process. It's a major expenditure. I believe our residents should be involved. And yeah, we've had meetings, you know, in camera because, because the negotiations, and you can't discuss negotiations in an open forum. So, I respected that process. Never, never talked about what, what the negotiations consisted of. Um, you know, those are negotiations that took place with our, uh, senior adminis, senior administration and, and senior administration with Irving Oil. So, I respected that process. So, I waited till I felt it was appropriate time to bring them questions and those issues forward. I, I'm asking council, please, uh, I don't know if there's an appetite for a deferral, probably not, but, uh, I, I do feel that a project of this magnitude, our residents deserve to be involved in the process. This is a major, major project, major, major, uh, capital and operational expenditure. I think we're looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, about three million dollars or more. And, uh, you know, at the local level, local level of governance, we pride ourselves in, in asking for input from our residents. I mean, we've get, uh, uh, notices of motion, notices from our communications people asking, sending out different, uh, requests for public engagement, public consultation on a number of different aspects here at City Hall. I don't see this as any different. So, I, I, I sincerely ask for council, uh, for your consideration to bring that forward. Again, if you look at the facility, uh, from a purist's perspective, that's not the original character. That picture we're looking at right now is not the original character, structure of that building. So, um, I don't know if Irene Rogers was here today. Life and times, Irene Rogers, no one has dedicated herself more to the heritage preservation, protection, enhancement of heritage properties in our, our city. I don't know what Irene Rogers would say today. I really don't. But nonetheless, I, I wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Beck?
Yeah, um, I guess first of all, in the whole notice of motion idea, the, you know, the deputy was saying, "We approved a notice of motion and we're seeking the answers to the notice of motion." My understanding of notice of motion, I think Mike clarified it here today, it comes forth, the information goes to the respective committee, and it's not really an endorsement of council. It's, it's a notice that looking for further information. So, I think that's important for us all to understand, that just because we put it in does not mean we get an immediate response. It takes time for staff to research, takes time to bring all the partners in together. So, I think that's an important part when we're looking at this, that because you put the information on the floor, it does not mean that an answer will come back to you tomorrow or the next meeting. There is time, pressures that are on all the departments to try and make that work. So, I think that's important for us all to remember in terms of a process part. In terms of this building itself, I think what, what, um, what came out of what I could hear from the last meeting, which I had trouble again, I was, I, I was trying to attend the meeting, had to go back and watch it afterwards on YouTube because of the connection problems that I was having. But this project, this building itself, can never be exactly replicated like it was. It'll never be exactly the same. The whole point is to try and preserve the historic nature of it, bring in the materials that will make it modernized, keep the historic sense of it, keep the defining characteristics of the building that maintain that historic nature, and then make the new part distinctly different from the old part. It's like when you're going in with any kind of building in a heritage area, you want to make it, I forget the term we use, but "of the time." So, the development is of the time. That building there, we're trying to maintain it as best we can and to keep the his, the turrets, the flat roof, the gabled roof, and all those elements that are consistent with, and the chimney as well. And keep those with the, uh, inconsistent with what has happened in the village over in Buckdusch or Kent County, wherever it is. Because it is one of the, it's the only remaining gas station of its type on P, on PEI. So, we're trying to preserve it for the future, but still make it a usable building. Reinforce the glass, get it in so the offices can be used. So, I think there is a, there, with this particular piece, there has been a lot of work. As the deputy said, there's been a lot of work on this for a long time. Many partners, provincial government, federal government, Irving Oil themselves, and our own professional staff as well. And those are the ones that should be driving this project in terms of moving it forward and allowing it to happen. I think the work that has been done has been exemplary. And I, I'm confident in the work that's been done by our professional staff, the level of support that we've received from the various government agencies, and grateful to Irving Oil for their support to the project as well. So, I think it's time for us to say, "You know what? Let's, let's move this forward. Let's get it going. And, uh, let's, uh, bring to fruition this modern project that we're trying, this project that we're trying to modernize and keep going forward for years to come." Thank you.
Councilor MacLair?
Uh, yeah, well, thank you, Councilor Beck, for that context. I, I think it's, my personal opinion, it's right on. Uh, I'm interested, as personally, in trying to advance this, get it started. Um, one question ahead, the resolution's on the floor, correct? So, uh, would I be right in assuming if this resolution is blessed or passed, then does that, does that give CADC, are they gonna be good to go to go to the next stage to get things happening, or is that too early a question? Or where are we when this thing is, if this resolution is passed?
Do you, do you defer? We're gonna defer to Michael.
Uh, through Your Worship, uh, thank you, Councilor MacLair, for the question. The next step, um, is really completing the tendering process, at which point it'll come back through the committee process with, uh, committee and council for the award and start construction this fall.
You want to follow up, John? Councilor MacLair?
No, uh, that, you know, that'd be great. I mean, I, I think it's time to get this thing done. Uh, it's been studied to death. Uh, there's been a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, um, as has been, like I said, pretty much summarized. But Councilor Beck, it, um, I want to see this thing get advanced, get started. Thanks.
Council Twill, third time?
Second time. Um, so, I don't disagree with the comments that, uh, Councilor Beck made in terms of, you know, all, all the different partners. Uh, the work that was done, there's no disputing that. I'm not, I'm not, uh, refuting that. What I'm saying is that a major partner in the community hasn't been involved, and that's our constituents. So, you know, that, that's what I put in the notice of motion. I'm being asked questions in the community, and, uh, that's not, uh, you know, that's not hearsay. Those are facts. And our, our responsibility is to our constituents and the constituents in this city. I mean, they're the taxpayers are paying the tab. And I just felt it'd be prudent for us, at least, uh, host public meetings or online, uh, online suggestions and recommendations, uh, social media platforms. I, I don't believe that's an unreasonable request. We do that with a lot of projects, a lot of different initiatives that we embark upon here at City Hall. I see this is no different. If I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong. So, that's all I'm trying to do here, folks. This is no different. When I talk about the original character, Council Bernard, we talk about the church out East Royal. We're not making any changes to that church in terms of the structure, the facade.
Hertz Hall.
Hertz Hall. I'm sorry, Hertz Hall.
Yeah.
It was a church. Uh, so, uh, that's all I'm trying to do here, folks. Uh, that's what motivated me to bring the notice of motion forward. And again, I respected the process in terms of the negotiations. I never once talked about the negotiations. I, I respected the process, and I waited for the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Twill. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Yeah, thank you. Two things. Um, uh, one would be a question for, um, Director Mike. And that is, when you say it's going through a tendering process and then back through committee, do you mean it's coming through Planning and Heritage Committee? Is that the one that will fall under, just to make sure I understand? And then I'll ask my next part while I'm standing up.
Through Your Worship, uh, to the deputy, I believe in this case, given it has been a property, uh, transaction, it may go through Finance Committee, but, uh, we can have some further discussion on what the most appropriate route would be on this specific project.
Great. Um, now that makes sense, that it would go through Finance. The other part I would want to just, um, just to reflect a little bit on what Councilor Twill has asked. And I though, I know it's always, uh, you know, it, we always love an opportunity to, you know, reach out to residents, get their input. Um, and, you know, there's, there's always that, you know, that area of, "Okay, when, when do we go out to the public and when do we not?" So, we have policies and procedures and bylaws that align with those processes. And I do believe that to date, we have followed those, um, po, policies, processes, bylaws, and that, and in this situation, there is not a component of a public, uh, consultation process. Uh, Mike can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but I do, you know, I understand where, you know, Council Twill is coming from. It's always great to listen to what the residents have to say. But I just, we do want to point out that we are, we are following, um, the rules and regulations within, that we have set forward. And if you wanted to just confirm that, um, through His Worship to Mike.
Mr. Russ?
Through Your Worship to the deputy, again, uh, thank you for the question. That's correct. To my knowledge, we've followed the typical process on this. There's no, uh, public meetings required, no changes, uh, to the zoning of the area to accommodate, you know, the proposal before you today. Um, it just went through Heritage Board, that was the process in this instance for a change to a designated building.
Okay, Council Twill, you did speak three times under your notice. No, okay, so this is your third time? So, is that agreeable to you? Is it agreeable to you, this is your third time? Oh, okay.
Third, uh, the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Chair of Planning and Heritage. I appreciate the work that put into this project thus far. Um, and while it might not state in the, uh, in the zoning, uh, heritage zoning, uh, bylaw, uh, with respect to public consultation, but what I, I, I think when we're looking at a project of this magnitude, I mean, this has been worked on now for three years. We've had all those closed-door meetings. Again, I respected the process. I waited for the right time. Uh, questions are being asked in the community. Uh, and when you look at project of this magnitude, uh, whether it's in the bylaw or not, we, we consult with our residents on a number of different initiatives, projects. Uh, we have open houses. We, we, we do a number of different, uh, public engagements. I don't see this as any different. Thank you.
So, when, when this was leaked inadvertently, uh, was posted on our social media, I believe it was Andrew Chisholm who put it up on X, and the response from that post was, I think, four thousand likes, like, just, it exploded in terms of the reaction. Um, Michael O'Grady, who submitted a proposal on October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, it's coming up to four years, and his group, Jerry Moore, Kim Devine, worked on this project. Um, many times, there were letters to the editor. Many times, I've spoken to people on the street, like, "What are you doing down there? It's, it's, it's a dilapidated building. You're letting it fall into the ground. Irving, you know, can you get Ir-" Like, there's been a lot of public conversation about this. And I, I, I want to thank the three CAOs that were part of this. Peter Kelly, Donna Waddell, Eleanor Muhammad, Urban, Urban Energy with Megan, Megan McConkey, Darren Gillis, Kevin Boucher, um, CADC, Aaron Hansen. They've been working with, with this whole group. And then we have a, we have Innovation Prince Edward Island, we have ACOA. Like, just the amount of input. And you know what to this council and the last council? Council Twill, you're right. We, we kept this contained within this room. And, and as I said before, we must've had the best plumber in Charlestown keeping sure that there were, making sure there were no leaks. But I want to thank council and everybody that worked on, and the staff. So.
Questions called. Questions called. All in favor? Council Dron?
In favor.
All against? Eight, one. And I did have Council McCabe leave the meeting, right? Okay. Anything else? Mo, motion to, yes, sir. Go ahead. Okay.
Are the residents in this city gonna have an opportunity to be engaged with this project? I'm just looking for a yes or no.
Yes. And that will happen as we move through this project. I'm sure we'll be getting calls about the development of it. But in terms of a public consultation, you've already addressed it, Deputy Mayor. There's nothing in our bylaw that requires it. So, any comments you get, please send them back to Michael and staff so they would, that we know that they're, the, the comments or the pub, public feedback is, is taken in and being addressed. Motion adjourned. Thank you kindly.